Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the Malden School Committee meeting to order. Today is Monday, December 5th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, January 9th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the chamber. As always, we will first pledge allegiance to our flag, will then have a moment of silence for all those who have served our country and continue to do so. The clerk will then take attendance to ensure that we have the requisite number of members in attendance to conduct business. After that, we will introduce our interpretation channels, and then we will get into this evening's agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes from November 14th, followed by public comment. Then we will hear from our assistant superintendent, who is sitting in for our superintendent, Emily's Peña. Then we will take up a motion and resolution regarding school council members, any points of personal privilege. And then we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for two reasons. First is the approval of the minutes of November 14th, 2022. And then we will take up non-union salary raises for assistants superintendents, principals, directors. The list is pretty voluminous, but everybody sees that on their agenda. And then we may come back out and act on the business that takes place in executive session, and then we will move adjournment. So are there any questions of the members before we begin? If not, please rise and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so around the world today. Thank you. We will now have our clerk call the roll.
May I, Chris Simpson?
Here.
Mr. Drummy?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Spatafora?
Here.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Mr. Waldy?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yeah.
Assistant Superintendent Peña?
Yes.
Student Representative Hakawi?
...did, and then graduated Malden Catholic High School in June of '67. On November 27th, 1967...
What happened? Oh, there you go. I can't even pretend to tell you what that was. Okay. All right, so we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to meet this evening. One added note is where we have one of our members on Zoom. We will be performing roll calls on each of the items this evening. So with that being said, now let's introduce our interpreters for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as always, anybody who is interested in accessing the Interpretation Service can do so through Zoom. And I'm going to just make sure that everyone is assigned... Oops. Oh, man. Oh, we got Lisa and Ting. And we'll activate the interpretation channels now. We should be good to go. So I'm going to pin our ass out. All right.
All right, everyone. So our first item this evening is the approval of minutes. And these are the regular session minutes of November 14th, 2022. Anybody's had a chance to look those over?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Ms. Spatafora, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Any remaining questions on them? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Spatafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Waldy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Here, yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
May I, Chris Simpson?
Yes. So those carry unanimously. We're now down to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to just a couple of minutes. Public comment is now open.
So just a reminder for the folks on Zoom, anybody wishing to participate can use the raise hand feature or dial star nine if you're on the telephone. We can alternate between Zoom and in-person. There's a big rush to the podium. Anybody on Zoom? All right, Mr. Chairman, I believe we are set.
All right, very good. We're now at the superintendent's report. This is an opportunity for the superintendent, or in this case, the assistant superintendent, to update us as to what's been going on around the district since the last time we met. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Peña.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So... Do I wait for you, Adam, to put it up?
It's frozen.
It's frozen.
So why don't you proceed?
Okay. So we're going to start with some celebrations when we're able to get our presentation on Frozen. You'll be able to see some of the beautiful pictures that go with it, but we wanted to acknowledge the wonderful 5K girls' run that took place at Salemwood on November 20th. Although everyone seems nice and spring kind of dressed here, I heard it was a really cold day that day, so shout out to everyone that got out to that race. And then followed by the BB Music Concert. So I was able to participate and attend the third grade music concert at BB, which was amazing. One of my favorite songs was the Katy Perry Roar song, but followed closely by the James Taylor Shower People You Love With Love. So amazing songs there. Thank you, BB. And then we had a lot of amazing football that took place in November, not only the Unified Football Game, but also the amazing Malden Melrose game at Fenway. So amazing work there, Charlie organizing those. The High Schools Beauty and the Beast play, I hope you all had an opportunity to see it. It was amazing, the costumes. The entire show was just top-notch. And then we also want to mention the food drive at the Ferryway. Thank you for not only organizing that, but thinking of all the families that benefited from all the goods that were collected. We also want to give a shout out to some of the school committee members that have been visiting schools. So we had Ms. Rose, Sharon Rose Ziber, and Joe Gray visit the Linden School. And then we also had Mr. Joe Gray visit the ELC. We don't have a picture of it, even though it's frozen and you can't see it, but we had an amazing pie sale at the Forestale with really good results in that fundraiser. Keep going. Okay. So the agenda today is going to be to go over the district enrollment. Then we're going to look at comparative end-of-school enrollment data. We'll talk about the new students that are coming through the Welcome Center, the MOST program, the number of open positions that we still have, a quick update on the AEAP Working Group, update on COVID, on transportation, and then end with how many days we have left for each of the months in the remaining of the school year. So to start with our district enrollment, for school board members that have this, on page 10, you could see that our enrollment as of December 2nd is 6,441. You could look at the individual school enrollment horizontally and vertically. You could look at each of the grade levels and what their enrollment is as well. Going to slide 11, when we're looking at district comparative enrollment data, you could see from September through each month what our enrollment has been. It has been steadily increasing, more so the first two months. And we are, like I said, in December 2nd at 6,441, almost to our numbers of enrollment pre-pandemic. So moving to slide 12, which is Welcome Center, we have in queue seven kindergarten students that are being registered and 28 students in grades 1 through 12. And then you could see here some of the schools and grades that have waitlist. So BB, grades K, 4, 6, and 8 have a waitlist, Ferryway, grades 1, 4, and 6, and Salemwood, grade 8. Next slide 13 is an update on the MOST program. So you could see the number of students that are enrolled for each of the schools along with their waitlist. So BB has 40 students enrolled with a waitlist of 16, Forestale, 44 students enrolled with a waitlist of 12, Linden, 36 students enrolled with a waitlist of 8, Salemwood, 38 students enrolled with a waitlist of 19. And then just some quick updates on the MOST program. So the enrollment has gone up from 158. It's up to 158 from 152 in November. The waitlist has gone down to 45 from an original 70. Hiring is ongoing, so we have one teacher and two assistant teachers that were hired in November. And as staffing continues to increase, we'll continue to notice that those waitlists get smaller. So moving to slide 14, in terms of open positions, you'll notice that we've consolidated the positions down to two pages. But on slide 14, you could see the open positions for BB, Forestale, Salemwood, Ferryway, and Linden School. And then on slide 15, you see the positions for the Early Learning Center, Malden High School, and district positions. And then you see the total at the top of this slide, which is 54 open positions. That is five positions down from last month. So we had 59 last month, and we're at 54. So we're going to move to slide 16, which is an update on the AEAP Working Group. So there have been seven meetings of the AEAP Working Group so far. The last meeting was on November 28th, where we invited two teachers to talk about their experiences working in the program, which the team felt that it gave them a lot more clarity in understanding the program. The previous meeting, they had discussed professional development for teachers, enrollment, entrance, and exit criteria in the program. And then for our January 9th School Committee meeting, we will be having a presentation that includes a review of the data and impressions of the program. And then slide 17 is just a continuation of the enrollment of the program by grade. So if you look at the December 2nd line, the numbers are identical and mirror our enrollment in November, so there's been no change. So then an update on COVID cases and cleaning protocols. So in terms of cleaning and sanitizing protocols, regular classrooms and building cleaning protocols are all in place. All schools and central offices have hand sanitizers in every single main entrance. We have hand sanitizers and masks available to students and adults in all schools, main lobbies, offices, and cafeterias, and we provide hand sanitizers for each classroom and bathroom. In terms of best practices, our school nurses are monitoring all COVID cases that are reported to them. Rapid tests were sent home with any staff and student that requested it on or before the Thanksgiving break. Rapid tests will also be sent home before the holiday break. They are readily available in the nurse's office to any staff or students who want them. We also have plenty of masks that are available as well. In terms of cases, from November 1st to December 2nd, we had 20 staff cases reported and 44 student cases reported. And we just want to point out that reporting is voluntary. On slide 19, this is a transportation update. So we continue to have bi-weekly meetings with NRT as well as ongoing daily communication to troubleshoot in real time the issues that arise. We have created additional route for the Early Learning Center, and that's being added next week, December 12. And they are onboarding and training the driver for that route, which is going to reduce the amount of time that our younger students spend on buses. We informally track arrival and departure of buses and have seen an improvement in punctuality since the addition of the vans to supplement the buses. Working on a pilot of Find My Bus, so that's a real-time app that allows parents to see the exact location of their child's bus. And then please reach out to the special ed office with any issues. We have had a lot of good success and rate of troubleshooting and working with NRT to solve problems. However, they need to know what the problems are if they're going to be able to resolve them. And then slide 20, we just want to remind everyone that December after today, we only have 14 days of school left, and December 23rd is an early release date at 11:00 AM. And then we just want to end by just wishing everyone a happy winter break and to remind everyone that school resumes on January 3rd, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's now take some questions in. Can we, before we do that, let the folks at home know that this will be put up online?
Yes.
Tomorrow morning?
So this will be posted on our website.
And that's at MaldenPS.org?
Yes.
Okay. So anybody that wasn't able to view it, this will be posted tomorrow morning. Let's take some questions. Any questions? Let's go to Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one brief question in regards to rapid tests. So it says that they're sent home to those that have requested them, but wonder if we have people that don't know we have them. Are we doing like a robocall or putting stuff out there to say like, hey, Desi has allotted us, you know, two tests per student or whatever, one for the Thanksgiving, one for the holiday? Like, are we putting that out there so people know to actually ask for them? Because with the uptick in flu, RSV, and COVID, I think it's imperative, you know, for our students to be able to take them home and know that they test that Sunday or Monday because of the holiday, before they come back in.
Sure. And I just caught Pam, who's already at the podium to answer the question.
That we have sent them home with everyone before the Thanksgiving break, and we will be able to send one home with everyone before the holiday break as well.
Without being requested.
Without being requested.
So we'll stuff them in a backpack and...
If you want more than one, we're happy to send more than one home as well.
And I know that they're going home because my own son came home last week not feeling well. And when he came in, he was like, here, the nurse gave me a COVID test.
Yep. So if anyone else isn't feeling well, any parents that want them, we have plenty at this moment in time. So if anyone would like one, all they have to do is reach out to school nurses, and we're happy to send them home. But as a matter of course, we will give one to every student and staff on the way out the door for the holiday break.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And I don't know, when we put up our presentation on the website, maybe we can put a little corner blurb just saying like, COVID tests will be coming home, just so people are aware, because the season has been pretty bad.
Thank you. Good idea.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spatafora. Other questions of the members? All right, let's go to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick thing. I know that you talked about this a little bit, and I don't recall. Do we have a timeline yet for that rollout of the Find My Bus? Or is it a work in progress?
It's a work in progress, and here comes Pam to also update us on that.
I'm sorry to give you the exercise.
NRT has been piloting it and is trying to roll it out. We're hoping January, February timeline, but we're still unsure. So we have a meeting next Friday at noon with them, and they're supposed to give us an update then. But the preliminary timeline is end of January, beginning of February.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. From the chair, on the 54 vacant positions, how many of them are in the queue? Or is that 54?
That's 50.
No one in the queue?
No one in the queue for those.
Okay. I do want to thank the school committee. If you recall, during the last budget cycle, we had put some additional funding into PlayPro. And after watching that play, I can see why we did that. That was, in my 10 years of serving, one of the best plays I've ever seen. Not just the actors and actresses, but the costumes and the sets, and the enthusiasm that I saw on the opening night was, just made it all worth it. So hats off to you all here for coming together on that request, which is, you know, never easy in a budget year, but I could see why we did that at that play. I also just want to take a moment on the one-in-a-lifetime game at Fenway Park. I think the moment I'll remember most was not so much the score and everything else that goes along with it, but it was after talking with Coach Witchy, and I said, hey, congratulations on behalf of the city. And his response back was, if it wasn't for that peer tutoring program that was in place led by Kashana Harling, who's doing a lot of our career services in the youth employment program, he's not sure where the team would have been. So I know Charlie Conifree's here and Steve Frecker, and there's a lot of other people who were, Joel Levine, who were instrumental in working with City Hall to have that program in place. And it was just interesting to hear, it was great to hear, not interesting, great to hear from Coach Witchy of all the things that were going on that night. That was the first thing on his mind, that the community was able to come together and not have a single player drop off in the program during the course of the season. So, and if that wasn't enough, I think we all feel the same about, you know, unified flag football. I was happy with unified basketball, but for Mr. Conifree and the rest of his team to take it a step further by having the first ever unified flag football game, that was another moment that I'll remember for a long time. So other questions of the members? I think, if not, we can always reach out to you after we go through the report. Yeah, please, Ms. Spatafora.
Thank you. Not a question, but just to follow up on Mr. Bernard's, and it's only from personal experience, until the Find My Bus app is available. As an out-of-district parent myself, with a son that has a cellphone, so your child would have to have a cellphone. We do use the Life360 app. That way I can track my child. So I don't know if there's other parents out there that their kids have their cellphones with them. I know it's not, you know, wouldn't work for those in, you know, second, third, fourth grade. But for older kids, I'm able to follow my son on his way to school and see how fast the bus is going. And like, it'll tell me if they had to. There's been a couple times that they've had to detour because of maybe a road closure, but I didn't know that the road was closed. And I'm freaking out. I'm like, why are they going a different way? But just for any parents out there, until the Find My Bus app is up, I think that's really a little neat app that's pretty inexpensive. And also to the mayor, who was speaking to the Unified Sports, when did we get a Powderpuff game going on? Because that really, I didn't realize we had like girls' football going on. And I was super excited to see those pictures. I think it was like seniors versus juniors, and that was so much fun. So I don't know when that happened. I wish it was there when I was in high school.
Yeah, my understanding, it had been in place, and then it dropped off, and then Mr. Yeah, Mr. Lightbody brought it back. So I think this is the second or third year of it.
We didn't have it back in 1995. I was very excited to see that, because I know when my own daughter was playing, she wanted to like form a rugby team, or, so I was really excited to see girls play in football. It's because it's not, it's not gender-defined. It's just play the game, so.
All right, very, very good, everyone. We'll now drop down to... Okay. School committee's going to be in a brief recess. Just going to see if we can get this back up on Zoom. All right, is everybody back?
Hi.
I can see Gary now.
Hey, just in time for Emily's to be done.
That's a good thing, Mr. Gray.
Emily, she left now. All right, I apologize for...
What happened?
I wish I could tell you what happened. I could make it up, but it would sound... So let's see. So I think, let me just make sure that our interpretation channels are still okay, and...
Mr. Waldy, I'm sorry for interrupting, but the interpretation and the recording have both been turned off.
Recording in progress.
There we go. So at some point, when we tried to share screen for the folks at home, the entire system just shut down. So for the folks who were on Zoom, they were able to have a captive audience with our interpreters and Joe. For the folks that were watching on MATV, they saw a video of us with no Joe interpreters or presentation. So we will make sure that the presentation goes up on the website, and I'm going to reactivate our interpretation channels, and then we should be good to move on with the meeting. So I'll restart now. Yeah, I know. All right, I believe we are okay.
All right, everyone, if you're looking...
好，那我们现在又回来的会议了.
No, we are not okay. We'll do this just in time for the meeting to end. One sec. Just need to make sure Ting. Now we should be good. All right, everyone. Item number four doesn't have anything under it, which is Subcommittee Reports and Discussions. So we'll now move to item number five, motions and resolutions. Mr. Waldy is going to talk about school council members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe everybody should have in front of them just a list of the school council members from each of our buildings, Linden, BB, Salemwood, Ferryway, Forestale, ELC, and Malden High School. This is just a routine. Once a year, we approve the memberships of all the school councils. So I will make a motion to approve pending any discussion.
Questions of the members? Hearing none. Motion by Mr. Waldy, seconded by Mr. Drummy. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Spatafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Waldy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
May I, Chris Simpson?
Yes. So that carries unanimously. Okay, everyone, we're now down to personal privilege. This is an opportunity for members of the school committee to make brief statements about what's going on in their respective schools. From there, we will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the reasons outlined at the outset of the meeting. Personal privilege is now available. Mr. Drummy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Wednesday, this Wednesday, it's parent-teacher conference night. There's also the PTO's having a bake sale. So it's for grades 1 through 8. Not, Ken, the guys aren't involved in this. So the PTO will be having a bake sale in the lobby at the Ferryway, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30. six to seven thirty. On the thirteenth, will be a PTO meeting from the Ferryway PTO. Again, it's on Zoom, so you'll have to go to the Ferryway PTO site to log on to the, to the meeting itself, and that starts at five thirty. On December fifteenth, this is a happy thing to come back, this is grades five through eight, they'll be having their band concert at the Ferryway. Every year, I've, since I've been on this committee, I look forward to this, and I've missed it the last couple of years, so I'm looking forward to that, and that'll be from six to seven o'clock in the auditorium, and that is the fifteenth, Thursday, the fifteenth. And last but not least, everybody have a happy holiday, whether it's Christmas, Kwanzaa, or Hanukkah. Enjoy yourselves, enjoy the holiday, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Drummy. Over to Ms. Rose Seibert.
Thank you. Wanted to just let everybody know, the third community meeting for the E L C Playground Project is scheduled for December fourteenth, and that's from six to eight. The meeting is virtual, and you'll be able to find the information at cityofmalden.org/elecplayground. And along with everybody else, I just wish everybody a wonderful winter break.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Macklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone that Mary Malden is still in effect. Today is the, we actually extended the deadline from December first to December fifth, so today is the day. If you're at home and you need sponsorship for the holidays, please get your wish list in today. The email address is marymalden2022@gmail.com, and we're still looking for sponsors. We have an enormous amount of wish lists and not enough sponsors. So what usually happens, we end up just giving gift cards, and that's not what we want to do, that's not the intention of the drive. So we're hoping that folks will step up and grab a wish list. Thank you, and happy holidays and happy new year to everyone.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Patafora, that's never stopped you before.
Nope, I will speak loud and clear. So I just want to let the community know that the Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Meeting will be meeting this Thursday, December eighth, at six P M, to take up some agenda items, and that will be via Zoom. And also, Malden Reads, in conjunction with the City of Malden, will be hosting a celebrating winter wonders, which will include stories in regards to the winter and holiday celebrations, games, activities, snacks, and that will be held on Sunday, December eighteenth, from ten A M to twelve P M, right here at City Hall. And lastly, I'd just like to say thank you as we wrap up one year with our newer members, Ms. Rose Seibert, Ms. Macklin, and Mr. Bernard. You've made it through a year, one more to go, but I just want to thank you for all of your efforts and, and just being here and taking the ultimate leap of faith into serving your community. And I think I speak for all of us when we say we really appreciate all the time and effort you've put into the past year, sitting up here with us. Thank you.
Fortunately, it was a very quiet year.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
All right, over to Mr. Welldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna echo Ms. Patafora's sentiments. I'm sure it feels like longer than a year. A couple, a couple of quick announcements. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, December sixth, the Forestales having their parent-teacher conferences from five to six thirty. On top of that, scroll through the, on top of that, on Friday, December sixteenth, from five thirty to eight P M, there's a gingerbread cookie decorating and craft fair event happening at the Forestale School. I know there was an extremely successful one that happened at the Bebe School this past weekend, so I'm excited to see how great the one at the Forestale is on Friday, December sixteenth, from five thirty to eight P M. The Budget Subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, December nineteenth, at six P M via Zoom, so we'll make sure to put that posting out with a link for folks if they'd like to tune in. And two quick community announcements. One, Santa Claus will of course be coming back to visit Pine Banks for the annual tradition on Saturday, December seventeenth, from two to six P M. You can come on down, it's the seventy-third annual trip that Santa has made to Pine Banks, so Councilor Murphy and her elves will be there from two to six P M to greet any families who'd like to come. And the following day, on Sunday, December eighteenth, from five to six thirty here on Malden City Hall Plaza, will be the Malden Area Public menorah lighting. This has been put together by the Chabad of North Shore and the City of Malden and a group of really dedicated residents, and we're really excited to not only be doing this again this year, but the mayor, I think last year, made a commitment to, or made the, purchased a menorah for the city, so that we're no longer just taking a traveling menorah around, which is really cool and very much appreciated. So that's Sunday, December eighteenth, from five to six thirty P M here out on City Hall Plaza. And just last but not least, I think I'll echo what a lot of folks have said, enjoy a safe, healthy, happy, well-deserved winter break. If you celebrate whatever you celebrate, please enjoy your celebrations, and that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Welldie. Okay. I just wanna join with Ms. Patafora and echo, I think the word I would describe how I feel about all of you, especially this past year, is proud. You stood tall in what was a year that I don't think I can remember ever seeing in my ten years as mayor. So I want to not only thank you, but also let you know how proud I am of all of you. I also want to go back to what Ms. Macklin said at our last meeting, that Malden has always been known as a giving community, and that was clearly evident this past Thanksgiving, where many of you, along with people here this evening and the rest of the community, came together to assist the Bread of Life and Mystic Valley Elder Services to distribute and serve roughly fourteen hundred meals. Much of that was organized by Maria Luis in our office, along with Council President Craig Spatafora, so I want to thank them and thank all of you. We had many calls after the dinner thanking Malden for taking the lead on helping the ten or eleven other cities and towns that were involved with this traditional event. So I think with that being said, we'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Ms. Patafora. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy? Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Welldie?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seibert?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes. School committee will now be in executive session.
Thank you to all our interpreters, we appreciate you being here and sticking with us through the technical difficulties.
Recording stopped.
School Committee is back in session and will entertain any motions from the members. Motion by Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-union salary raises pursuant to the minutes that will be attached here, too.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Drummy. Any questions, queries, qualms, concerns? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy, Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Waldah?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes, that carries unanimously. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Batafora, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Batafora?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Mr. Waldah?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Ziber?
Yes.
Mayor Christensen?
No. No, yes. School Committee is hereby adjourned.